Not like that?
No.
Okay, good. You're okay? You're okay with it? Okay. So we.
I was like, oh yeah.
Here's what I needed, um. Good look off right now.
There are three of us.
I'd email you like.
I wasn't expecting.
I'm just gonna send this one here. And the man, you know, just. They always get back quick. Oh, no, we can. Can it? You know, the tenant retire. Tenant. Are you ready?
Uh, it is. Oh, I have a silencer. Is that okay?
All right. Anything, anything in the future? And with the flat.
Alyssa there and, uh, get Larry up. Reader and Denise get Larry.
Yeah, right.
Good classrooms.
Sounds good. I don't know, but I don't know. But I'm gonna start this meeting.
Seven o'clock. It's the window without them.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting at seven o'clock. The pledge feeling. I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. This time, I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of Lieutenant James Van Downs who served for twenty years within the Little Cop and Fire Department. And many years prior as a volunteer fire. Thank you. Any announcements? Any? Have a motion for the minutes.
What should prove the minutes as written?
Second. On favor? Department reports. Have a motion.
Move to place five department head reports, senior services, town store, fire department, tax assessor, and administrator on file.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Well, business four. Receiving considered letters of interest to fill the vacancies on the whole county housing trust. Uh, James Harrington put his name in. But in the first go around. Now, the last round, and he was a very strong candidate. I'm going to make a motion to James Harrington. Okay. Any discussion? On favor? All right.
Aye.
Thank you. Any comments from councilists regarding, or should create something for temporary housing? For farmer staffs, I imagine you've done something?
I have, yes.
Um. Do all we need tonight is a vote set for a public hearing? Or do we want to do anything else?
I think. Comments.
Um. I will say that, um, Andrew, I take more than Gary Matter, Otis, and a solicitor have been working very diligently on this. Create something, and something is here.
So I would say that Andrew did quite a bit of the work on this. He came up with some good proposals here, so I give a boost to that. Because this is. Doesn't, anything with zoning affects housing. I don't think it needs to go to the planning board. And also. I don't think it needs to be. Uh, optionized, but I would suggest that we put it in papers, meets, and then bring it back on. Next town council meeting. Or vote, or whatever you want to do. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
Solicitor?
Yes. Any comments on, on all your hard work?
No, uh, I'll echo what Gary says. I think that, um. That we wanna. We've given us a lot of consideration over the last four years, honestly. Then we say. I think what the farmers have come before is pretty reasonable in terms of what they need. I think it affects very few people in this community, and I think that we can. Give them. You know, a handout. In, in this form. Um. So they can get go season. Uh, before it's too late. Sure, I think, um, you know, I'll echo what Gary said. I think that. Timing is important here and getting that, getting that through is, uh. Is also important, so.
I mean, if we send it to the planning board, they wouldn't have the meeting till the first week of. May, a lot of these guys have already started. I talked to one of the farmers today. They've already started planting and whatnot, so. The only, under section two definitions, second paragraph. State farm, plenty of the farm on which the temporary farm working facility is located. As shown by a certified payroll to be filed with the building official on a monthly basis. And. I just put in there, or such paperwork. As approved by the building official, and that, that's so that. We don't have people saying, okay, well, I'm a farmer. Be, you know, plants a couple of tomato plants while I'm a farmer now, and then he puts. Couple of, uh, trailers on his. Lot, and then he starts renting them out. That's not what this is for. We're trying to prevent that from happening. So would that be okay language, uh? Mister Solicitor? Well, that would be as approved. Or such paperwork as approved by the building official.
Could you explain the difference between. Temporary farm worker housing and temporary farm worker housing unit? One is referred to as a non-tenant structure, the other is referred to as a temporary structure. Difference there that we're trying to emphasize?
I don't believe there is. I think it comes out to the.
Go ahead.
It's, it's definitional. And, uh. Temporary farm worker housing unit. Uh, goes into the, uh, types of structures, uh, that it could include but not be limited to. But so it's, um. More of a, uh. Descriptive term than anything else.
In itself.
Correct, yes.
Other is to, is to characterize the idea of what constitutes.
That's correct, yes.
Carol, do we have this up on this, on here?
Nope.
So we can make these available. List draft.
Well, it. It will get advertised. That's the whole point of the advertisement.
Fix tonight.
Do you, Jesus, not on the screen? Do, do you want me to give a brief description? I have a brief description. Uh, the temporary farm worker housing ordinance, and, and some of this is out, I'm just going to be, um. Uh, reading from the, uh, ordinance itself, but. Uh, just to echo what, uh, uh, Gary said, this is not a zoning ordinance. This is a, um, building code ordinance, so it won't be in chapter fourteen. Uh, it won't be in chapter fourteen of the code. It'll be in chapter seven. That's the first thing. Second thing is, is this is a temporary, uh, housing. And, uh, there are provisions in there later on. Uh, that state that this is only for, um, employees working on the farm, and that's the reason that you want to have some type of. Uh, documentary evidence that that's what it's, that's what it's for. There is a statement in there that, uh, this, uh, type of housing. Cannot be used for commercial purposes. To include the, um. Possibility that it would be used for short-term rentals or even seasonal rentals, uh, for that matter. Um, the, uh, final thing is, um, on there is it's nine months. Tops. Has to be vacant for three months. There are provisions in there. Thank you. Uh, Andrew, but there are provisions in there. As obviously, um. Compliance with the building code. For, uh, potable water, that source. Gotta do that. Also for, uh, sanitation services too. This will allow the, um. Farmers to take advantage of this, there's some flexibility in, uh, what type of temporary, um. Housing they'll have for their workers, uh, during the seasonal area. So if you have any question, I'd be happy to answer on it. Any questions, I'd be happy to do it. This is not an overly long ordinance because. It doesn't have to be. It's, uh, a targeted ordinance for a specific, uh, um, activity going on in the town.
So I'm gonna move that this be advertised, uh, until. The next meeting of, on the twenty-fourth is brought back up for a vote at the, uh, town council meeting of. April twenty-fourth.
So, uh, under discussion, gonna have a public hearing, Carol, with this?
Mm-hmm.
Public hearing, and, and it'll just be advertised where?
It goes in the planet times. It'll also be on the town website.
Town website. I'll be back in two weeks from today.
As all ordinances are, it'll be the first item on the agenda.
Right, so we're still under discussion. Is any questions for anyone about it? No, you haven't seen the document. Call Larry Anderson.
And so Larry Anderson, again, I haven't seen it, so maybe this is a best, and I think, uh. I think my concern is, one that you were raising, Gary. And I, uh, and maybe the distinction between the building. Code and the zoning code. Takes place in this, but. You know, there's a history, uh, and there have been legal disputes about, uh. Farm uses. We've had litigation about it with regard to. Uh, uses that may or may not be. Admissible in a residential zone, but you've let them. Certain cases take place because they're farmers. Our, our zoning ordinance. In regard to what a agriculture is wide open. I mean, the ordinance, uh, is just one sentence that, that says agriculture is a permitted use. Through, in, in the whole town. What you seem to be addressing, Gary, was either documentation or definition of what constitutes a. Farm or a farmer for this purpose, does the ordinance? Say that, what that is? I mean.
It does not. I'll tell you why.
Okay, that's why I'm just raising, yeah.
Me, uh, if you're bogged down.
I, I understand that you could be, but that's why I'm asking.
I don't, I don't know how many, uh, done. Farms are gonna be able to meet the standards and have employees. That it's not working on a seasonal basis that we have to provide evidence for.
Okay.
And I, to me, that's how you get around that.
Okay.
Um, the difficulty isn't defining. You know, what a farm is, and there's a lot of definition.
Right, I know.
This gives some flexibility, but this is designed for, um, agricultural. Um, uh, agricultural businesses. That hire seasonal employees. Need this housing for them because they can't get the workers. And, uh, the key on this is that they're gonna have to prove that the workers are working there, and that's why the language.
Okay, so. Um. I understand that. I think, uh. By doing even that, we're setting a precedent. For, for. But. Uh, how someone qualifies as a farmer for the purposes of this use. Uh, so in a way. I would just. Uh. Suggest to the council that they think of this as a, as a, as opening a little door. For clarifying things that haven't been clarified in the past about. What we called, and we put it on their shelf, accessory farm uses. Which require defining what a farmer is, and that's, that was one of the things we bumped in, uh, up against, uh. And we didn't. Proceed with that approach. So. I, I'm all for the, for this. For this use, but I, I think. I think of it as, as an opportunity to rethink, uh. Uh, how to approach. Making clear in the ordinance and allowing certain, uh, other uses for farmers. To make their businesses viable. It's just, it, just. Uh. I just raised that.
That's me, it's separate and interrelated from this. Uh, the only definition, the only term. That I've heard in, in talking about this is what, your farmers is actually a farmer. Uh, who mentioned that, uh, they shouldn't apply to Scotch and soda farmers. And I didn't know that you could, you could farm.
Well, that's, that's raising a point. I mean, literally, my, my argument has been that any of us owns property, kind of, under the current ordinance, can call ourselves a farmer. There is no. Uh, uh, base of, cut flowers on our, on our, or, uh, cooler of eggs, we're farmers. So. This is, uh, you know, I don't want to read the history, but my argument was that if I had. A carton of eggs out on my front yard, and if I wanted to have, when we were everything before, if I wanted to have. Concerts and weddings, and there's nothing in the ordinance, it's as a, I couldn't do that just like a place with a hundred acres. So we, we haven't resolved that in our ordinance. So anyway, that's, I'm not trying to sidetrack it, but I'm just saying, it's this, this opportunity, and I, I. But the farmers have come forward to this, and that you're considering it. But, uh, I also think it's an opportunity to perhaps rethink other ways that we can, uh. Uh, take into account. Non-farmers and Scotch and soda farmers who. Uh, weren't really farmers, maybe. And find other ways to support our, our, our farmers within the ordinance. Thank you.
There's one other in, in section four. Uh, four B. It says, as a condition of the permit, the farm property owner is required to file the building official. Certified payroll, and I would also interject, or such paperwork as approved by the building official. So the both of. Where it comes up with certified payroll. Are, uh, the same. Now, Larry, to, to your point. The building official is gonna be on top of this, I'm pretty sure. He's gonna know who's a farmer in town. I think we all know farms in town, so. And to your point. That's a whole nother can of worms that, uh, I, this, that would bog this down, I think, so. Thank you.
I have the discussion. I have a hands.
Just wanted to make one comment. The planning board is very much in favor of this. One thing that, uh, we had in our original draft. Was a setback requirement for the temporary housing from the abutting properties. So that, uh. Uh, the butters would be. Wouldn't necessarily have something right against the property.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Full business three?
Nope.
I have a hands?
Got a vote on that.
Yeah, on favor? Sorry. Full business three. Discussion review of a plan submitted by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Traffic and parking. Chief Brains, would you like to speak on this?
Sure.
Uh, as a matter of history, um, this was something that, uh, myself, town administrator, and Mr. Mushin. Met with DOT. Uh, back in the fall, September of our, or October, I believe. It was once the paving. Had been completed and most of the striping had been done in the common. And, uh, they came, and one of our concerns was. With the addition of the curbing along both sides of the common, we kind of lost some parking spots, some spots that were. Quote-unquote created by people, uh, driving up on the grass, uh, on these, particularly on the, uh, south side of the common. Uh, so there. At that time. The idea of creating one-way, creating end parking or parallel parking is brought up. They gave that to their engineers, and a couple of weeks ago, this. Actually, I received the plan, uh, that. Showed us an additional ninety-one parking spots in the common. They've since revised that, and that number has dropped down to, uh.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Additionally, I've spoken with Michelle King, who's, uh, one of the engineers at DOT, and, and she's been very receptive to my calls and my emails. And one of the suggestions that I gave to her. If you look here. At Pike's Peak, we currently have. Two. If I can do this. And maybe not working. We currently have two no parking signs that restrict the parking all the way down to the tip of Pike's Peak. I'd like to leave those. And pull those. Four spots on the north side and those three spots on the south side. I just think it cleans up a little better, and I think it's a little safer for the buses coming and going in the morning at the school. And it'll give a little better line of sight for, uh, those traveling in the, those two directions as well. Again, this is a proposal from DOT. And we have to remember that this is their road, and they've just completed, um. A really good improvement project for what we have, or what we had previously with the curbing and an actual sidewalk, and. Um, it becomes a little safer now, but I think this makes it even more safer, if that's, you know, safer. Um. On May seventh, the state's traffic safety commission is going to meet and discuss this proposal. Um. Couple of things could happen at that time. They could look at this and say, yep, we really like it. And this is what we're gonna do with it. We're gonna move forward and schedule it. They could say, no, we don't like this at all. Leave it as it is and not do anything, or they could bring it back to us from our comment. Again, it's comment from the towns and our suggestions to them, but again. I stress it's their road. Um. This project is somewhat. Less invasive than a total construction project. My understanding is that they would put this under the category of a striping project. Which, if approved, would put this somewhere in the summer of twenty-twenty-six. Uh, the striping schedule is already done, uh. Late winter, early spring for DOT, so. They'll do whatever projects they have throughout the state, but realistically, this is just grinding of current lines, creating new lines, and then that small island that is to the east. Uh, at the intersection, uh, will be removed. And additional signage, not enter, some signs are going to be taken away, obviously. That's what we currently have right there. With my suggestions that I've already passed along to, uh, Michelle King of the, the parking. I also suggested that there was no parking at all. In that grass area in front of the school with the new curbing. Uh, I spoke with the administration of the school, and they agree with that as well. So. That's what I've got, and I'll take anyone's.
I have a question on the, on the, uh, eastern leg of the commons. Um, there's a great deal of available parking space. That's been, um. Marked, marked off. And this may go to your, your point about it's improvement of safety, but once. This leg outside the, uh, town hall is one-way west. It would seem to me that that, that is large peaks right here. Of unavailable parking could be. Uh. A few more spaces to replace it, and the reason for that is. I don't have to explain to anybody here, but this is a very intense area of the commons in terms of people seeking a place to park. And what it would tend to do, it would seem to me, is drive people down the leg of the commons looking for a place to park because they can't. Parking what are perfectly, in my view, suitable parking places. And only prescribed by the fact that we used to be worried about somebody coming up here and coming around this corner. So. As a minimum of some parallel spots, and I must say that I don't understand the, the, the whole breakup of this, but. And that, that goes to this corner as well for the same reason. When, when a car comes up here and it stands off from parking spaces, it would seem to me that car has two choices, go to south on South and Commons. Or make a left-hand turn. Neither of those, to me, impact somebody parking, and dare I say it, you could park parallel parking next to a curve. I don't think that's. It might test some skills, but I don't think it's out of, out of.
Somewhere at the mercy of the ability or inabilities of parallel parking, so.
Thinking when we do this, it would be awfully nice. I'm sorry, sir, were you smiling? I didn't know. Uh, it would be awfully nice if we could. Gain as many spaces out of this.
Absolutely, I agree, and I, I can tell you that the current situation that we have over there at the corner is obviously because of that nature that you, you know, people pulling up. To the island and wanting to take a left, crossing that lane of travel. They, they are forced to edge out. Previously, they were forced to edge out as far as they could. With that now curbing with the light, wha- white lines, that creates a, a better line of sight from the stop line that is now there. It should have been there. Might have been faded, but now it's, it's back. Um, so yeah, I, I think you could add a few more spots there, but again, this is their engineering. And it's whatever standards that they have to meet from the Fed, the federal government. Obviously, we're taking money from the feds, we're taking money from the states, so you have to. Play by their rules, so to speak. So if. The DOT or the, you know, the current. Engineering design calls for such. Amount of footage for a line of sight, then that's what they're gonna put there. But I don't know if we could add some more spots, but that's certainly a suggestion I could make. When I discuss it with.
I can just add just two things. Uh, the cost, we talked about the cost. We don't have a, um. Final, uh, answer to that. But from what I understand from the emails I've been on, it's ninety-five percent that the state is gonna pay for this, but it's not sure yet.
Yes, I.
Not a huge project.
Saying that this will be completely paid for by the state because Michelle was leery to say that to me as well. That decision will be made when this plan is approved. My guess is that, yes, it is their cost. It's their road. They're improving. Uh, the safety of the roadway. They are improving the parking situation and, and the general flow of traffic around the area, so I would think that this comes out of their pocket, but I'm not gonna say that definitely.
My second point. Any questions or comments that anyone has can be directed to you. Um, so you can report that back to the DOT. I'm happy to take questions today for a, for a little bit. Um, but after that, you can go contact this gentleman, go in his office and talk all.
I urge anyone, feel free to contact the public safety complex, make an appointment, come in and sit down with me. We could look at it on the. The thing and, and just. We'll discuss it, and all of this I'll put together in a big email, and I'll send it off to DOT prior. May seventh. I'd like to do that a couple of days before May seventh, so they have an opportunity to digest it before the meeting, uh, and, um, we'll see where it goes from there.
Chief. And the same general area, uh, Mr. Mushin was talking about. The parking lots are going in towards the southwest. That was because the traffic going that way was going to the south. Wouldn't those, um. Parking by the, uh, church to the east of the church, wouldn't they be better off going the other way? Because you're gonna come around.
It's still two, it's still two-way in front of, at Wilbers. Still two-way traffic. Yeah, okay. This is only one-way east to west in front of town hall and west to east on the opposite side.
Okay, very good.
It still remains two-way, so. Pretty much what we have over there now is what they, they didn't, realistically, didn't touch anything that we have over there now.
Good.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just to talk to you about this comment.
We have that on the agenda.
Yeah. Again. You have to understand, this is the state's road, and they're bound by certain standards, so when they put down new pavement. They have a lot of standards they have to follow, but guard rail, curbing. Signage, and signage has to meet the current standards of NISA, National Public Safety Traffic Administration, so. Again, yes, they're different from what you're all used to seeing. But if you drive around the state, that's what they all look like now, when they, when they.
If you, if you wanna, if you wanna speak, you're gonna have to come up because no one can hear you.
On the agenda later.
And it is on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
And again, I, I can't speak to their plans for the state's plans for signage. It's. Really not my area.
Sid, come on up.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Sid Wardell, uh, two seventy-four Long Highway. But also the owner of Wolver Store. And the encompassing property behind it. Um, I did go in and talk to the chief, uh, both about the, this plan. Also, a couple of concerns that I just want to bring to the council's attention. Um. I think there needs to be some direction from the council and recognize some issues happening just by. The mere fact of the changing of the line. First of all, there's been spaces that have been removed there, so understanding. That adding some spaces, uh, quite a few spaces around Pike's Peak is gonna help. We also need to understand. Uh, that many people believe. That Wolver Store behind there in the post office is public parking. And it's not. And we're running up against an issue where we have a number of businesses. Around the Pike's Peak area. Partially down south of Commons. That don't have the appropriate amount of parking places. That they were told to have as a business when they started. It's sort of been a, it's worked, but now we're taking extra spaces away. It's not working. On Sunday. Uh, at approximately nine o'clock. I stood and watched twenty-five cars park. Behind Wolver's. To attend other places. And not to go into Wolver's store. Not to go into the Commons lunch, and not to go into the post office. So I think you gotta look at. What's actually happening there. Uh, to understand that the changes that are being made have an effect on the business, specifically our business there. I think that the town has gotta look at some of those other businesses where when we've talked to the employees. They've said, well, they told us to park at Wolver's because we don't have places to park at our business. Okay? Okay, so I'm looking to work with the town. I'm looking to do anything we can. I've lived here all my life. I was the chief spot once, right? So I understand that. Um, the other piece is that's not addressed on this, and I I mentioned it to the chief, was coming north on South and Commons. So I think somebody deliberately didn't put markings for two spots right in front of Wolver Store. I think it's a good idea. We've talked about that for years. Because if you appropriately come up south of Commons and stop at the stop sign, you have to wait for a vehicle to come by you so you can go out around those two vehicles, right? Maybe it's time that something is put there, some type of an island, some type of a planter, some type of something to either gradually move traffic off of in front of Wilbers because quite frankly, the front door of Wolver Store and the front door of the Commons lunch, the ramps that are there are on an easement because they're on state property. So I'm glad the state didn't come in and just take the spots away. They could have. But I think there needs to be some direction from the council on recognizing the problems that it's causing because you know what's gonna happen. People aren't gonna wanna walk all the way down here to go to the Commons, go to Wilbers, go to the coffee shop, go to the uh um the nursery uh school that's there, right? So this issue is is now cropping its way up because of the changes. The forty-five degree spots, I think, is a great improvement. That's, you know, gained so that that traffic going north or the ones coming south, and as the chief mentioned, the ones on the corner, Mr. Mush and maybe grabbing those pieces there. Um, but I don't think this is leave it to the chief, leave it to the the state to figure out what's going on here. It's gotta be the council that comes up with some decisions on what is actually happening there by the businesses and what the real impact is.
Just a couple of things. Uh, one, have you lost spaces because of this drawing in front of Wilbers?
By the drawing, yes. I think it's two.
Spaces?
Yeah. Which was which was right in front of the, you know, the door of Wilbers. So I mean, that, you know, I'm not complaining of taking those two spaces away. In fact, I think it's been long overdue to try to do something there, but at the end of the day, those spots moving.
I can tell you, they didn't line them. There's still been.
Oh, they are exactly right. So there's no, you know.
There's still there.
There's you actually mark from here that the other two spots are right next to Wilbers, you know, people just pull in and they go straight in, so.
I think uh leave it to, you can't leave it to the state, as you said, and we need to make decisions. It's not our road. And I think we could certainly say, listen, you know, you've got some issues, that's why the businesses have some issues. Let's bring that to the state. I don't know what else we can do. Um, that's what has been articulated to me by the chief. Um, unless there's some other, something I don't know.
Well, I I would.
I agree with, and Carol, can you blow that up for on your side? It shows, obviously, it it shows that there's two spots, there's two cars right there in that spot. But if we do put some kind of a a bollard or a giant planter or somebody, you're gonna force people to like stop before the stop line, fine, and then kind of veer to the left and go around there. Um, but again, you're not gonna lose some spots.
I don't have a problem losing spots for people that are coming to Wolver Store. We'll supply them parking. The issue is, it's everybody else that's using those spots and they're not going to those two establishments.
So that was my third thing. Stay up so everybody can hear it to the microphone. Um, do you want more signage in the back of your lot that says it's Wilber Park feet only? You asked me to go with the rumble that I heard out here. I don't want another sign intact, right?
So. I I know, honestly, right? So I don't wanna turn into Newport that I put somebody out there and charge five bucks for everybody to go pop there either, right? I'm I'm bringing this to the town for you to recognize that you have businesses that are not supplying the amount of parking places that they need. I don't need to name them. You know. Right? So something's gonna happen here. So all that, all this is doing is if we, if you stay by the 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 proposed lines that are there in front of Wilbers, the spots that get taken away. And when you say not, you know, not losing spots, there's only four spots, I think, in front of the church now, and two of them are taken up by hand gap that are approximately twenty-two feet wide. And you've got a a fire hydrant that's out there that I think is about thirty feet around it. I mean, we've got a hydrant over here and I pulled up tonight, there's a nose of a car almost touching it. So I mean, you know, that that I I just think that they're they're, I know, I've been a part of the going to the traffic commission and gone there before. They are willing to listen to the town with an issue to to address them. Maybe not take down the signs, maybe not take down the guardrails. And I don't wanna get off the rail because I'll I'll talk to another issue about that because it's on the agenda, but I want you to recognize, yes, it's good improvement in flow of traffic. It's not a good improvement the overall because it's taking spots spots away that are now going on to private.
Do you have a recommended solution to this? Can we have?
Well, I think there's, there has to be some addressing with the businesses that are there to provide appropriate parking like they were supposed to and like they're supposed to by town code. So they need to address some stuff. That will alleviate some of the parking that's happening over on our property.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Like anything else to say on?
So just something else that was brought to my attention that I'm gonna mention and I'll I'll throw out here. With the one-way direction here, west to east, this is almost the opposite of what we're all used to in parallel parking. So we're putting the driver's side on the curb side, which um for some people can be a little difficult to uh get in and out of their vehicle. So again, that's something I'm gonna bring up to uh DOT. Now, they said, well, we could switch it to the other side. I don't know what their answer would be. You you'd go down from that thirty-something spots to probably twenty because now you're dealing with several driveways and walkways on the opposite side of the roadway.
Anyone else like to comment today? And we will have a um public hearing in two weeks. I have a motion on the floor.
Um, I do not have a public.
Oh, not on this one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but not on this.
Not on this one, sorry.
Informational, I believe.
Yes, yes, sorry. And there's no vote on the table. Thank you.
If people do have comments between now and the the traffic board, please contact the chief.
Absolutely, come on over.
Do you know what time? On May seventh?
Usually in the mornings, I'm not sure.
Thank you. The old business. Update on Grandmaster IOF meeting at thirty-two Commons. We had a meeting, myself, the solicitor, uh Bob Booth, uh Roger Wardell, and Victoria Talbot was there. Uh, it was a very, a really nice meeting. Um, I think I see Mike Taco over there, the Grandmaster is in the house.
Oh, that's Tom.
It's not Mike.
Deputy Grandmaster.
Deputy Grandmaster. Nice to see you again. So uh we had a wonderful discussion, very collaborative, cooperative uh discussion um where we came to some agreement that we need to update the agreement uh that is forty years old. Um, that the IOF, uh IOOF will share their space. Uh, they are, they don't have to have exclusivity on the second floor and they are willing to work with the town. So I appreciated that. Um, you know, with all the class individuals out there, uh it was a good meeting and I was glad to have it. Um, solicitor, do you have anything to add? I know you were at the meeting.
No, there are some things that need, definitely need to be updated. Uh, just as an example, we talked about it at the meeting, the Americans the Disability Act uh was enacted after this lease was entered into effect. And that there's some issues with that that need to be addressed on it. So at the very least, uh there does, there there does need to be updates in the agreement between the town and the IOOF and some other issues can be looked at too.
Thank you. That was our update on that meeting. Old Business Five, update on status of the DPW building project. So just to uh report out, there has been engineering and uh architect work done on this building. It's proposed a six thousand square foot building. It continues to have an ongoing scope. Uh, we're getting some discussions about most of it. Um, so that's happening uh as we speak, uh going.
Just for clarification for people that don't know.
Yes.
So the building goes after dump property.
Correct. The transfer stations, a better word.
The maintenance department.
Ma- maintenance department building. Thank you for that. Uh, six. Update, a meeting with the community center, uh myself, Bob Mushin met with the president, uh Bill Terrio, uh the director, Amy Booney. Their young lady, I can't remember her name, is here. Yes, there he is. It was, it looked different that day. I don't know why. Uh, so we had a very nice conversation over there. Uh, and they are interested in uh continuing their lease to the town for that building and getting it back to a fifty-year lease. Uh, they've since they've sent it to their legal to look over their contract. Uh, and our solicitor is also gonna work with their legal uh to work on that contract uh and getting that lease back up to fifty years. So that's some reports that have been going on with that. Old Business Seven, request from the Recreation Committee proceed with the process for the pickleball and tennis court project, including, but not limited to. Um, request for proposals, permission for lighting and application to zoning overview for special use permit. Just quickly, we are going, this is another phase. Um, and I think we all know pickleball has a pot of money uh that the town has uh they've got from the town, uh financed the meeting through the years. Uh, this is six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollar ask for preparation of special use permit application, associated materials and advertisements, and also attendance preparation for the zoning board hearing um by Activitas, their engineer. Um, so that's what this is about. How many other notes I have here? Does anyone else wanna comment on this one? You want to, solicitor?
Well, uh, based on the invoice, I made a.
Let me just say before you do that, that invoice was for 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 two hearings, but there's only one.
Correct, yeah.
So you strike the other two thousand eight hundred and eighty out.
Even with the change, I should have become an engineer.
You should.
Now, um, I'm I'm gonna say this. I I understand that, you know, some engineering work has to be done uh for the application. The application itself is a is a fairly simple form. And uh uh for the presentation, the town is the uh owner and in a sense, the applicant. So town officials are gonna have to be there to to do the presentation. And uh based upon what is being asked for and based upon the relief needed, um, I'm I'm wondering how much of a role um the Activitas people need to have for this uh just based on that. This is this is town application. So um I I I don't, I'll work with the uh uh group if they want on this, but it 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 seems to me that um this is uh more expensive than it should be.
Are you saying that I have to be prepared to attend and do a presentation?
Well, uh, it that's not as as bad as it sounds, but yeah.
And I don't get paid.
No, that money.
No, you don't.
I'll be prepared for that. I will do that. But it's just, that's that's what you need to do here. Uh, applicant and owner are are really one and the same. You're gonna wanna have people from the uh uh committee, of course, uh on this, and if there's any engineering questions from the zoning board, which I don't doubt, the engineer can be on hand. Uh, but I I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. This is actually uh uh my main practice area. Uh, I'm taking a look at, I'm saying I I made a mistake.
Carol, anything to comment to clean anything up on this?
Well, you already noted that there's only one here, and so you cross off one of those. I did notice in their first listing of costs that they are listing associated materials and advertisement. That's not the responsibility of the engineers to pay for the advertisements that way. It's normally from the application fee, which in this case would be waived because of the town. So there is some value in that first number that should be removed because they won't be required to do advertising.
Carol's correct. We have someone up.
I'm just here as as the uh head of the subcommittee, the IHOP committee. And so we had discussed this with Activitas. Do we come to you just so we can negotiate um the prices as you're as you're discussing?
Yes, we're we're here to vote on six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars to approve for preparation of a special use permit application, associated materials and advertisement and attendance and preparation for zoning board hearing.
Yeah, but ignore the advertising because there is, there will be advertising, but that's.
Right, so I'm just saying what I've got in front of me. So if you want to, if we, I mean, we don't have to vote for this, right? We can deny it, number one. Number two, we can vote for six thousand nine hundred and eighty, or we can ballpark whatever, you know, you want, is there a suggestion to vote for something less than six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars?
May I, may I make a suggestion on this? Um, go ahead and approve here. The uh group is asking to proceed. Vote for that. Uh, but uh in terms of the costs, make it subject to review by the solicitor and I'll come back with another number after talking to the Activitas people. Sounds personal. I can't.
I'll make, I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
I was gonna say, is that a form of a motion?
Your first motion as.
Yeah, make that a motion.
Carol, do you have that? Would you like to read it back?
He may wanna hear it again. He's proud of it.
I suggest that the council approve the request to more action items by Activitas and but make the cost subject to whatever the website was.
So that's Andrew's motion.
Gary's seconded.
And Gary has seconded. Any further discussion from anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, thank you. New Business, considering hiring the firm of CLA, Clifton Lawson Allen, the credit firm. Do I have a motion for?
The motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. New Business Two, request from the town moderator to reappoint Stan Madden to assistant town moderator.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Update from DPW on conversations with Rida on recent paving project signage. So I just wanted to update the town um what you can do, and I think uh the chief kind of stole some of that thunder. Um, that if you see something that you don't like or it's in the wrong place or it's named wrong, that you let the town know, the town hall, and they will send all of these objections to uh Rida. And I'll give you an example. Uh, Carol will give you an example on on one of them. Yeah, with Carol.
Any complaints about Commons Street, which we've never been? I did speak to someone directly about Rida on DOT and already ordering new signs that just say Commons. So that one makes sense. I don't know about the rest.
So that's the procedure that we have. Um, you know, I don't know what other thing we have or else we can do, but to keep letting them know.
I had a resident call me, I guess, at the end of Thomas Road where it goes into Swamp Road. They have Brownell Road on that side and.
That's been passed.
That's been passed. Yeah, I I told the DPW director on that, so.
That's been passed.
Okay. That one's been addressed.
Yep, great.
Ted, anything you wanna add? Ted, I know you're immersed in it and talking with Rida. And I know your phone's ringing. You probably don't wanna talk till you get to the microphone, I guess, right?
It'd be real brief, but um I did make a call to Ames Pratt, I think his name is, his community outreach person, DOT. I reiterated what complaints are, the volume of signs, the size of the signs, the misplacement of signs. Uh, the craftsmanship of installing signs. I mean, Installing signs. I mean. Signs are all askew from each other, especially I think Favinia in front of her house, she's got a. Complaint, but all those curves from Simmons Road all the way out to East Main Road. They put two Chevron signs back to back, but they couldn't put. Them on one post, but they gotta put them on two posts and they're at different angles and it's. Anyway. As chief said, it's. Take federal money to do the paving in the streets, so they're bound by federal standards and it's really. Not a lot we can do if you complain about it. We can get. Little better. Get the signs put up a little better. Uh I don't know, but as chief said, they are, they're like that through all of the state. Um we start trying to compare. The signs we have. You know, now with what we put up five years ago, ten years ago, and the other like Peckham Road and Snell Road. You could see the difference in the size of the signs. If we complain. Maybe we're gonna get bigger signs on those roads, so it's uh, to me, it's a catch twenty two. But as far as the road on. Uh Brownell Road, if they don't fix that, I think that's on town property. Maybe I could just move it out over the other side of South Commons if we actually have to. Put it where it belongs. That's all I really have.
Thank you. So we're on the signs, any. Angle we can get, folks, is what I'm trying to tell you. This guy, do you get? Got a magic bullet for us on this, cause I I'll take it.
Oh, what is it?
You gotta wait. Got a magic bullet for this solution? I hope you do.
No, I'm gonna be a skunk at the uh uh lawn party, as they say. So let's all recognize that we've got guardrails that have gone up on roads. Where I've been here for thirty five years and I've never seen a car go off the road. However. In South of Commons, we have two and a half foot drops. And it's okay. Uh here we again, that I think there needs to be some conversations on. Why they did it in certain places, not in others, right? I mean. Uh you know, the alternative on South of Commons may not be good. But that's truly a hazard. As opposed to, you know, go anyway from here up East Main Road. Uh. The corner, go past the police. I mean, it's just guardrails that are, you know, not only in places that they've never been. But they're on right as close as you can put to the side of the road. We went through this on Peckham Road. Six or eight years ago, and everybody was upset, you know, that all of a sudden the guardrails were right there. You know, I've seen one guardrail that's gone up in town. Uh it's got a magnet. I think it's been hit five times. That's a good placement. Whoever chose that one, right? They just need to go a little bit further, cause everybody hits it head on. But I mean, there's a discussion and I and I would ask. Didn't DOT share any of these plans with the town?
I have asked, I haven't asked that question. And I asked Carol for the answer, and I forgot what it was. Do you remember, Carol?
I said I was out on medical. If the answer should be the yes, probably did. I I know that there was a meeting while I was out on medical. Where they came and made a presentation.
Right, I, yeah, I mean, I don't recall them saying, we're putting, you know. Or maybe we didn't look at it. Uh and 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 see what it looked like in real life. I don't know if any other, anybody else could call.
We think the proposed corrective action is appropriate. I don't think, I can speak personally. Uh I was looking at the kinds of things we talked about this evening. Not imagining that shiny and reflective. Battle sided. Uh. You know. Items were in the office. But then again, I'm not sure that I would have seen that posted, but we were given a review. And that's not saying I didn't have a chance to look at it. I could have asked it, but I think we can ask it now. We can say, here's our thoughts. I've also been alerted that we can. Propose to the state that we declare certain uh roads a scenic highway. And that would. Make it so we can get rid of maybe some of the signage. Well, I suggest maybe we ask the solicitor for a memo on how we can go about doing that.
In a kind.
Eliminating some of it.
Are you thinking?
Yeah.
I like it. Solicitor, uh is this happening at all, all towns are in uproar? Is there any other creative ways? That uh that he suggests that we could do?
Um the uh what Andrew's referring to is is uh uh twenty four fifteen one in the general laws. You could declare certain areas, uh certain roads scenic highways. And that's not something that uh many communities are eligible for. As a matter of fact, most communities like this type of signage. But is it appropriate here? The answer's probably no. Under this statute. Under this chapter. You can declare the area to be scenic. And um. Had some uh greater control. Over the type of signage that you have. The uh law is designed to keep a rural and scenic character. For those areas that are eligible for. Like, for instance, this area. So it's something I think you explore. This may be the avenue. To um address these uh signage issues.
Would that start at the planning board? Let's stay here.
Uh ultimately, the council has to make the decision, but the planning board could certainly be involved. Along with your comments committee.
Right. Andrew, you wanna make a motion on 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 that? I'd be happy to second it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we ask the solicitor to come back to us with recommendation for how to pursue that avenue. And. Two weeks?
He actually has some experience with this thing.
I'll second, I'll second your motion. And we're in discussion, any other discussion here?
Can I just, could I finish up? Um. For the council to not forget. That we went through this with our rumble road.
We still made road, still lose the sleep over the rumble road.
Absolutely. So I mean, it there again.
Out of all.
So I, you know. Respectfully, I think somebody doesn't have their eye on the ball once in a while here, that these things are happening when we don't have the opportunity. To look at those plans, right? That I know in that rumble strip happened. The the state came back and said, well, we showed you, we told you what we were gonna put there. So I mean, I I just, that this, you know, you, we, the council just brushed off. What I brought to the issue of parking up at the commons. It's not gonna be the state traffic. You took no. Issue with it. So I'm I'm repeating to you that I think the council. Has an obligation to the community that when they don't like what's happening is to is to state that. Now, the state may come back and say, sorry. But at least you can put yourselves out there that you don't believe something should happen or should happen in a certain direction. I mean, we talk about the rural character of this town. But we have on the island up there, a a political sign that's right out of Central Falls. Right? I mean, how about it? And I've seen those types of signs all over the place that are nice character type signs. We're just losing the the ball completely. On the rural character of this town and just saying, well, we took state money, so we've gotta put up with it. I just think the council needs to take. A a foot forward to be looking at these issues before it comes to this.
So tha- that's the intention. The intention of the uh agenda item today. Great to talk about this and see what we can do. And that's the something we're gonna do. Chief Rains. Articulate to me the way to do it. We just had a a something that's out of the box here to do. Is there anything else that you suggest we do?
Well, we just, no, on this issue, I think that's the appropriate. But I'd like to hear something on the issue that I brought to you about the parking, that you just breezed over and went on to the next subject.
And it was that tonight you're talking about? Right, so you you had a question for that. Right? Or or a question for that. It's gonna go on the chief, he's gonna articulate that to the RO DOT. Uh he's talking about his property behind Wilbers.
Oh, you're sorry, get back upstairs.
Seriously? I'm kidding. Come back and. Re-articulate what uh you asked to be breezed over.
That there is a parking issue. Caused by somewhat now has been brought to a head by the change of the parking design. But what that's bringing to the table is. There are businesses. And other entities. That are now. Uh relying on the parking of a private parking of uh parking. A private property owner. To supply them parking, and it's just gonna get worse. And my issue is. That there are businesses there, and I've been told by those people using the business and employees that said. Our bosses told us to park over here, cause we don't have enough room. So this issue of coming forward. It's it's not on the chief to bring forward that they gotta find other places. There's an issue here in my eyes. That's either gonna go to the building inspector, or to the businesses, or to somebody to say, hey, look at this and bring it back to us. So that we can address it, because I don't think we wanna, I know I don't wanna get to the point that I gotta put somebody there. To not park there, because the people that are coming to our location can't park.
Alright, so the issue is they're parking in your, in your place behind there.
So. We should probably have the solicitor. Statement was just said by Mr. Waterhouse. And give it to the building official. And tell them these uh businesses are out of fines, cause they don't have. Enough parking for businesses. And you can give them some legal leaves to give to these businesses and say there's. Some people that have private parking areas that you're not supposed to be parking in. Unless you, unless, I mean, if you go into Wilbers or. Commons lunch, I guess it's okay to park there, but if you're across the street. And I can understand what him, it's like parking in a.
That's. Not to interrupt you, but that's another reason I'm here. We have a business that's for sale. My issue between them, okay, but I'm stating it here and I told the chief. A business that's for sale that doesn't have rights to park back there. They don't have, they have now two parking places which are handicapped out front. And if if or when they sell. It's gonna just compound where people are looking to park. Because I hope it's a thriving business. I hope they bring it back. But along with that comes people that are gonna be using the the location, along with in the summertime what we're added on to. So it's kind of a heads up to you, but understand that that's just another area. And they only have parking that's by agreement, by an easement for for people that work at that location and nobody else. And I, you know, in fairness to the chief. When we talked the other day, he said for the longest time, he thought it was a public parking area. And we've had people that do that. They come. They they wanna go for a bike ride, they meet there, they wanna go to the beach. They're all loading one car, but they park there. You know, it's just, it's compounding on what's happening, and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. So. Uh I agree, I think something with the the the, at least the stock there to give them notice. But this goes back way back. Uh we put no parking signs. On the east side of South of Commons. Before you get to the post office in that area, because people were parking there that were using. You know, the other businesses on the other side of the road. I believe that they were supposed to put in a parking lot capable of holding. A certain amount of cars, never happened.
Right? Alright, so I'm cleared out on that. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I'm gonna push it on the table. I'm gonna push it on the table, then you can make yours, Gary. I'm gonna push it on the table, right?
You left them all.
Okay, you wanna repeat it?
Uh to ask the putter to come back. One, that Mason have seen it roadways.
All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Any opposed? Not.
So I'll make a motion that we have the solicitor to look into the zoning. See how many spaces are needed for these businesses over there. You relate that to the building official. And have him speak to him. With the concurrence of the solicitor.
Building. Second. Any more discussion? Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Alright. New Business Four. This is long. Requested name November twenty twenty five is Veterans Month and allow the placement of one thousand American flags on Blake's Peak. And banners containing the names of veterans who have served our country. Additionally, a request for the lights to be placed on the tree on Blake's Peak. And to allow handmade poppies. To be hung on the tree in honor of our veterans, lighting the tree. The first week of December. Request from Carol Woodell. Or Rocha, Michael Rocha, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board of License Commission, petition for class F one day retail beverage license. Five events to be sponsored by the LC three. LC three fifty committee on April seventeenth. May seventh and seventeenth. And July second and thirty first. All at the community center.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any? Thank you. Communications. Request from the United Congressional Church to use the town landing on April twentieth. Twenty twenty five at six AM. For Easter sunrise service.
Motion to approve that also.
Second. All in favor? Uh alright. Request from the Nitro Bar for the renewal of a mobile food establishment license. For use out of a coffee trail located at Young Family Farm.
Motion to approve with all state and local requirements met and adhered to.
Second. Favor?
Hi.
Okay. That one passes. Request from Greenwood Chicken. For the renewal of a mobile food establishment license for use in town.
Motion to approve with all state and local requirements met and adhered to.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Press from LOEI Inc., EBA LaPage is on the go. For the renewal of a mobile food establishment for use in town.
Same motion with all, a motion to approve with all state and local requirements met and adhered to.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Thank you. Press from McCray Seafood for their renewal of a mobile food establishment license for use in town.
Motion approved with all state and local requirements met and adhered to.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? That's tomorrow's service station in Charlie. Ice cream, so they're dictating a holiday sales license for premise. In a thirty five minute house lane.
Motion approved with the same requirements.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Seven, request for an entertainment license received from Little Compton LC three fifty. For events to take place in July and August. As part of the LC three fifty celebration.
Same motion, motion to approve with all state, local requirements met and adhered to. I don't think this will be a problem. It's not like it's a band. It's a. Non-anthems music, so I don't think there'll be a problem from the neighborhood. Hopefully that won't be.
I have a uh motion in a second, I'm gonna. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consent. North.
Yeah, I'm.
Got one?
To approve the consent uh. Calendar. On uh consent race. This deals with the. General Assembly after they.